Tuesday, February 19th. Welcome to the City Council. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. If anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, I would ask that you please stand to identify yourselves for the record and state your name and address.
Hi there.
I'm Charlie Moore. I'm from Leominster, 14 Nashua Street, 01453.
And your purpose?
I'm recording Johnson for the department.
Okay, thank you. We will now have Counselor -- oh, hi, Mr. Puller.
Puller, 167 Blossom, and I'm doing audio recording.
Thank you.
Santa Viola, New Westridge, New Hampshire. I'm recording my sons.
Thank you. And we will now have the salute to the flag, I'm sorry, by Counselor Fleming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, will you conduct the roll call, please?
President.
President.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donley.
Yeah.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Vice President Green.
Here.
Counselor Catty.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh is absent. Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter on the agenda may do so, but not for more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing none. If there are no objections, we will now hear the oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier today. And we had new appointments. The first one, permanent full-time firefighter, Fitchburg Fire Department, Mr. John Viola. And Chief Roy, do you want to come up and do that again?
Thank you, Counselors. Again, a very good candidate, John Viola, resident of Kane Street in Fitchburg. John is the top candidate on the new civil service certification that was certified in December of this year. He's a U.S. Army veteran from 2005 to 2008, served 15 months in Baghdad. He's a certified EMT and currently is attending Mount Watch Use College for his fire science degree. We feel John's a very good candidate. And as I mentioned at appointments, he's going to be filling the shoes of firefighter Val Ramos, who we lost in December. And Val was a very active member of our department in all civic events, department events, whether it's spaghetti suppers or marching and Fourth of July parade. So we know John's a good candidate to fill Val's shoes.
Counselor Bushman.
Did I hear you say he lives in Fitchburg?
Yes, he does, Counselor.
Great, that's what I like to hear.
Thank you, Counselors.
The Appointments Committee report. Are they accepting the appointments, confirm?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you want to do the swearing in?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have the Madam Clerk do the swearing in. Firefighter, thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my knowledge and ability perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent full-time firefighter for the city of Fitchburg. So help me God.
Best of luck to you. Take care.
And don't forget, move to ward two.
Keep yourself safe.
Thank you very much. John, watch him in. Mackus will get a picture of everybody. I'll send it to you. One, two, three. Congratulations. Congratulations. Now you're going to shoot the other guy. Congratulations.
Hi, Chief, welcome back.
Thank you.
We have two special police officers, Sergeant John Mackey and Officer Ron Leclair.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'd like to just reiterate what I said at the appointments because I think it's imperative that I recognize the efforts these two gentlemen have given to the city of Fitchburg over the last 33 years. It's my honor and privilege, I stated before, to present these two names for consideration as special police officers. Sergeant John Mackey has served our community for the past 33 years, and he began his retirement last month. John has held many positions during his years of service, from a B Corp to a detective and finishing his career as a police sergeant, passing on his skills to our younger generation, next generation of police officers. Officer Ron Leclair is completing his 32nd year of dedicated service to the city of Fitchburg. Like John, Beef has held many positions within the department, from a B Corp to a school resource officer to a detective. And his last assignment over the last decade was as our armor and as our training officer. The impact these two gentlemen have had on the Fitchburg Police Department will live on for generations. They've imparted knowledge to our new generation of police officers that will last for many, many years to come. They would like to continue their service, and with the approval of the Appointments Committee this evening, they're going to pursue as special police officers for the city of Fitchburg. And on behalf of myself, I came on with these two gentlemen, and it's bittersweet when the gentleman that came on was retiring, and it happens all too soon and all too quickly in our career in law enforcement. We're losing two great ones, but they're not going too far, and they're going to continue to serve the city. So on behalf of the police department, I'm extremely grateful for everything that these two gentlemen have done for the city of Fitchburg over the last three decades of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bushman.
Chief, I just want to say something. Are you sure you want me to put you on as a special police deputy? I'll be bugging you all the time, like I used to do on the phone.
I think I've become accustomed to it, so.
But I do want to say thank you very much for answering my phone calls and responding to my ward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you like to do the swearing in? Thank you. Oh, we have to.
Make a motion.
Counselor Zarella.
We actually already approved the full report of the Appointments Committee on the last motion. That was the form of the motion last time.
Okay, thank you.
As we get sworn in.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my knowledge and ability perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a special police officer for the city of Fitchburg.
We did that at least four or five times. You did it like last week, and you did it the other week.
A lot of guys retired. You know, a lot of those guys came on.
I think we've got.
Correct, because we went down and.
Yeah, and communications and the special presentation.
And then they hired like 10 or 12 of them.
All right, moving on, we will hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donley. Get in there. So, and it's used by. Counselor Donley. We will now hear a report from the Committee on Records.
Thank you, Madam. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion second to approve the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. One reappointment letter, Mr. Nicholas Carbone is a member of the Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2022. Several other appointment letters. Ms. Mary Ann Gichard is a member of the Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2020. Ms. Doris Mate as a member of the Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2022. Ms. Carolyn Quirk as a member of the Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2022. Mr. Leandro Lopez as a member of the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire March 1st, 2022. Ms. Cassandra Taylor is a member of the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire March 1st, 2022. Ms. Tamar Russell Brown is a member of the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire March 1st, 2022. And Mr. Matthew Brune as a member of the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire March 1st, 2022. Motion second to send appointments to the committees. Speaking of the motion, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Communications, none. Other communications? Can we move to this? Yes. Okay. We will now have a special presentation. Fitchburg Municipal Airport. And before us is Mr. Scott Ellis. Good evening and welcome.
I will keep this brief. I don't want to have a death by PowerPoint. I'd also like to welcome Commissioners Kettle and Libotary here as well. The purpose of this presentation is not to talk about the budget or numbers. This is simply to inform and educate you on some of the things that are happening down at the airport, a little bit about the history. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the airport, what we're doing right now, and what we hope to do in the future. Fitchburg Municipal Airport is classified as a general aviation airport. That basically means that there's no scheduled air travel. You have three kinds of aviation in this country. You have military aviation, you have scheduled air travel, and then you have the rest as general aviation, and that's where the airport falls into. The airport comprises 335 acres. 53 acres are paved. That number's going to come be important later. I'll talk about that. It's been here since 1929. We're celebrating our 90th birthday this year in June. We have two runways, runway 220, 3,504 feet. That runway is going to be closing in 2020. It's because of the rising terrain, the FAA has reclassified it as a non-compliant runway, and therefore it's not eligible for funding. The other runway, excuse me, is our longer runway, is runway 1432. That's 4,510 feet. This is the runway that's going to be subject to the expansion. This is where we're going to get the 5,000 feet. The airport has 18 buildings. Six of the buildings are privately owned, and we have land leases for those buildings. The other 12 buildings are owned by the airport and operated as either equipment buildings, storage buildings, or hangars. The age of the buildings range between two years from our new hangar all the way to 90 years old. We have one hangar that was built the year the airport opened. The airport currently has 120 based aircraft. This number has not really changed probably in the last 30 years. You'll find that any airport usually, anywhere around the country, that the number of aircraft is going to be based on the population around the airport. Population of Fitchburg and Leominster hasn't changed much in the last 20 years. The population of licensed pilots hasn't changed much in the last 20 years. We get about 60,000 aircraft operations a year. That number is a little low in the last couple of years because of some issues that we are currently addressing. The heyday of general aviation in the United States happened in the 70s and the 80s, and that number was around 120,000. The airport, like I said, opened in 1929. First landing happened on the 10th of June, back when it was a grass runway. It was given to the city of Fitchburg and Leominster for the sum of $1 by S. Wesley Haynes and C.T. Crocker. He was a local architect, and Mr. Crocker was the son of the owner of Crocker Paper. They were both World War I veterans. In 1941, the Airport Commission was formed by city ordinance. And also in 1941, construction of the long and crosswind runways began. This is an interesting number because the runways have been repaved, but they have never been rebuilt. So the infrastructure, the drainage system that's underneath that runway dates back to 1941. In 1943, the name was changed to Fitchburg Airport after a land swap with the city of Leominster for the No Town Reservoir. Counselor Bushman had asked why other communities aren't involved. They were. The city of Fitchburg wanted the airport, and Leominster wanted the No Town Reservoir, and that's how that happened. Some of the tenants that we have at the airport include air charter operations. This particular one is Skyline Aviation, who is our largest fuel purchaser. We have multiple aircraft maintenance facilities, and they employ probably, I want to say, around 20 to 25 people. And we offer flight instruction. Now, the flight instruction is important, and that it's not just the flight school that's located at the airport. Because of the airport's proximity in the middle of Massachusetts, a lot of airports in the area will send their students to Fitchburg to do their practices and takeoffs and landings, and they also purchase fuel. One of the largest tenants that we have on the airport is the Fitchburg Pilots Association. Fitchburg Pilots is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. Just about most, all of the good publicity that the airport's had in the last seven or eight years has been with the help of the Fitchburg Pilots Association. Everybody's, they've seen the pictures on the front page of the Sentinel for the Santa flying in and raising money for Toys for Tots. We also have the Young Eagles Events. We offer free, they offer free plane lines to kids from the ages of 8 to 17 to try and get them interested in aviation. We host an open house air fest every year. This one is going to be in June on the airport's 90th birthday. We've also had, they also host historic aircraft, such as the Ford Tri-Motor, which Mary Dina Tally did get to go and fly in. And they also offer scholarships for science, technology, engineering, and math education. One thing that doesn't get a lot of publicity that should is that the Fitchburg Pilots Association organized an air bridge from Massachusetts to Long Island to drop off supplies, clothing, food, water after Hurricane Sandy. And there was 47 flights out of Fitchburg Airport bringing donated relief supplies down to New York and New Jersey. Some of the non-based tenants that we have served and continue to serve includes several federal state agencies, such as the Army, National Guard, Department of Defense, Massachusetts State Police, Boston Mid Flight, Civil Air Patrol, U.S. Marshals Office, U.S. Customs and Border Patrol, and the Bureau of Prisons have all flown into and utilized the facilities. The airport's proximity to the federal prison at Fort Devens means that we are an ideal location for drop offs. Some of the civilian customers that we serve include Utz Quality Foods, Dick's Sporting Goods, O'Reilly Auto Parts, NetJets, Flex Jets, helicopter line inspections, which happen twice a year. There are several companies that will base out of Fitchburg again because the airport is centrally located basically in the middle of New England. We've also hosted news gathering agencies. We've had helicopters for Channels 4, 5, 7, and 25 on the ground at the same time, all buying fuel, by the way. Some of the non-aviation events that we will host at the airport include car shows, concerts, bull riding. This fall, we are going to host a New England balloon festival. So hot air balloons flying around New England in autumn is going to look pretty good. We've had some construction recently. The terminal building that we did have here was built in 1952. It served its useful life, and it was replaced under a state project for our new terminal building. I'm sorry. I continue to call it a terminal building. The state doesn't like it when I do that because terminal is when you have air travel. It's an administration building. I've got to get out of the habit of doing that. This administration building not only helps support aviation activity, but there are several city agencies that utilize our space for their various meetings. Our current project, which is going to be completed in June of this year, is the addition of a self-serve fuel farm. This will give the airport 24-hour fuel capability. Right now, we're open 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This will allow in the summertime for late hours, weekends, holidays. Orange Airport has installed a similar service within the last year, and they've doubled their fuel purchases in the summertime. One of the other projects that we've had is leading up to the runway project, and that's for the navigation easements. We had to acquire property rights and easements on roughly about 25 properties, plus or minus around the airport, to remove vegetative obstructions. They had become an air hazard to the point that the FAA had shut off our night instrument approaches, which kind of hampered our fuel sales. We just got that project completed and got those approaches turned back on or reactivated. All of this leads up to the runway project. Currently, we have two runways, as I said. One's 4,510 feet long, one is 3,500 feet. We have a total paved area of 53 acres. Some of that pavement dates back to 1973. The last time the runways was repaved was in 1985. It was supposed to have a 20-year life expectancy. It's now 34 years old. This has created an issue with maintenance. It's created an issue with weed control, frost heaves in the cracks, and it makes flying into and out of the airport in the wintertime sometimes dicey. Again, because of the rising terrain on the east and west of the airport, the crosswind runway is going to go away. Now, there are 38 public use airports in the state of Massachusetts. 29 of them are single-use runways. So having two runways is an advantage, but it's also a disadvantage because it's twice the pavement that we have to maintain, twice the pavement that we have to plow. Once that runway goes away, the new runway is going to get extended from 4,500 feet to 5,000 feet. 5,000 is the benchmark. When you have an insurance company that wants to insure a corporate flight department, they're going to say, are you going to be landing at runways under 5,000 feet? We're going to charge you A. You commit to landing at runways over 5,000 feet, we'll charge you, it's a lower rate. And that's why it's not just 5,000, it's 5,001. So when you do the searches online, show me runways over 5,000 feet. Along with the extension of the runway is going to be a new stormwater drainage system running the entire length, a new lighting system, new visual approach indicators, and new instrument approaches will be published. It will decrease our total paved area from 53 acres down to 35. That's going to lower our operational costs, and it's going to make plowing quicker, it's going to make weed control a lot easier. At the same time, with the closure of the other runway, it's going to increase the area on this airport that's available from development from 46 up to 99 acres. Now, some of those projects do cost money. Most of it is paid for with federal grants. Worst case, this is just an estimate, but worst-case scenario is it's 95% funded. The best-case scenario, if we qualify under the FAA's new funding source, is that runway is going to get rebuilt for free. We'll find that out. I'd hope to know already, but the government shutdown kind of delayed things. I hope to have that information probably within the next month or so. The navigation easement project cost the airport, the total project cost was $5.5 million. Our cost was only $267,000. Runway expansion is going to be $12.5 million. Worst case is it's 90% funded by the FAA, 5% funded by the state, and 5% local share. So the worst case is $627,000 for a $12 million runway. Once that runway is expanded, the main runway is expanded, and the crosswind runway closes, these areas in red are the ones that are going to be available for future development. Areas 2 and 3, we're looking at expansion of the industrial park because of its proximity to Crawford Street. I know that industrial land in Fitchburg is kind of at a premium. That's about 50 acres of land right there. The southern part of the third area, we're going to limit for aviation activity, hangars, T-hangers, corporate hangars. The area to the south along the Nashua River, we're dedicating for development of a possible solar farm. Just to give you an idea, this is about 29 acres. An airport on Cape Cod just built a solar farm that was half that, and it's generating $500,000 in additional revenue for that airport. So if you're worried about how we're going to pay for all of this, we have a longer runway, which is going to encourage greater jet traffic. We're going to have new approaches, which is going to encourage all traffic. And we have three different areas that we're going to be able to develop, either solar farm, industrial property, or additional aviation activity. There has never been a solar project at an airport anywhere in the United States that has not made money for the airport. So we are really, really, really pushing this. The FAA looks favorably on solar projects because it's low-impact, it doesn't interfere with aviation, and it lets you get money from buffer zones that otherwise would not be used. There's an old saying in aviation, and it's a mile of road will take you one mile, a mile of runway will take you anywhere. And with that, I open the, any questions?
Thank you for that. I do have one question, and that has to do with the selling of the property to either industrial, to convert it to industrial space or solar farm. Is that, are you allowed to sell that property?
We wouldn't be selling it. We'd be leasing it.
Leasing, okay.
So it would remain under airport control. The FAA allows that if you can demonstrate a financial benefit for the airport.
Okay. And is fuel sales still your number-one revenue source for the airport? And is fuel sales still your number-one revenue source for the airport?
Right now, rent is actually on number one. Fuel sales is a close second. What makes this project so beneficial is we're not putting all of our eggs in one basket. We're not just relying on an increase in traffic and increase in fuel sales, where we're getting money from a long-term lease for the solar farm, we're getting money from additional hangar space, we're getting money from an expansion of the industrial park, and we're getting money in increased traffic at the airport.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Squallia.
Have you done any exploratory work for the land, for the expansion, for the industrial park? Is that land suitable to build, or does it require any, I don't know, work?
Most of the airport was built on an old farm and a swamp, so there's a lot of organic material. We did run into some problems with our administration building, that they had to excavate a great deal of soil and truck new soil in to be able to compact it, to put the building up there. However, the north end of the airport, closer to Crawford Street, the soil is much more stable, but we haven't done any drilling or testing as to the viability. However, there's already an industrial park there, and this is an expansion of that. So, I think it's something we'll be able to work with.
How about the potential expansion for our restaurant building to be adjacent to the administration building?
Well, the space is still there. If anybody wants to come in and develop a restaurant, I would be more than happy to listen to that. The airport does not want to be in the business of owning a restaurant and owning the equipment. So, we would be more than happy to have a restaurant. Restaurants tend to attract people to the airport, but they tend not to be very profitable to the airport. So, we would certainly entertain it. I would love to have a restaurant there. It gave people in the Pittsburgh area, Pittsburgh, Hermeston, Lunenburg area, a reason to come down to the airport. They wouldn't normally have it, but it was kind of a break-even.
Is it true that there is a portion of funds, approximately $100,000, to make the site pad-ready or to build, to bring utilities or whatever it need be?
We don't have any funds reserved, but that would be the ideal way of doing it, is we would provide the infrastructure and somebody else would provide the restaurant.
And then you would just lease the property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman. I'm almost dreading, right.
You almost got away from me. Question.
Yes, sir.
Many years ago, and I mean many years ago before you, not before you were born, but before your time on the airport.
So, maybe.
And there was a study done already, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they were going to put solar panels down at the airport, but for some particular reason, it got discarded. You say you're going to try to put them in, or you're going to lease the land out. So, somebody else can put it in, and all you're doing is going to get paid for rental fees.
Solar farms at airports generate revenue in one of a couple of ways. The first is that you buy the electricity back from the owner of the solar panels to cover your electrical expenses. I'd also like to add that if we were to do something like that, the wastewater plant is right over on the other side of the river from where that solar farm is going to be looked at. Another way to do it is a payment in lieu of taxes, or a third is to simply have a land lease. Most solar farms are leased, usually for a term of 20 years, and then when the 20-year term is up, they either come in and put in new solar panels, or they simply remove the panels, and it goes back to being open land.
Now, on the expansion, if you can go back in some of your pictures where you were going down towards Crawford Street, and you said you wanted to put the, maybe put an industrial park there. If I'm not mistaken, on that end down there, number two, isn't that the, wasn't that the old landfill in that vicinity down there?
The old landfill is right over here.
Yeah.
That is not going to get developed, the runway. We have 4,510 feet right now. We're looking at expanding it 300 feet in this direction and 200 feet in this direction, almost abutting the river. The development that I'm talking about is the area marked Area 3, the north end of Area 3, right next to Crawford Street.
Okay. And now, did I hear you say, how many employees are down there on the book?
Employees that work for the airport, including myself, there are five employees. I don't keep track of the exact number of employees that each business employs. It's in the vicinity of 20 to 25.
And you said that, according to here, you said, if I'm not mistaken, you get about 60,000 flights per year coming into that airport?
60,000 aircraft operations. An aircraft operation is a takeoff or a landing. So, it's a little, the number's slightly deceptive because we're involved such heavily with flight training. A student pilot may practice what's called a touch-and-go, and alls they do is land and takeoff, circle around and land and takeoff. They could do that 20 times in an hour, and that's 40 aircraft operations on one aircraft.
Now, do you have any idea what is used for commercial and what is used for, I call it, play? You know what I'm saying? Businesses around here, how many commercial flights go, they generate income for the area, and how many people use it just for play? You're saying the 60,000? Well, and I understand what you're saying there prior, but do you have any idea how many use it for actual work?
It's hard to say because people can use aircraft the same way that they use a car. You'll take a car, and you'll drive your personal car, and you'll drive it to work. There are several of the tenants, several of the aircraft owners, that don't fly the aircraft professionally to earn money, but they'll fly them to conduct business. There's one gentleman who owns a turboprop. His name is Paul Hathaway, and he has a very large, very expensive aircraft, and he flies up and down the East Coast conducting business. Now, he's not flying people in the plane, but he's using the plane to further his business.
All right. That's it for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you in a couple of months for the budget.
Thank you. Oh, we count on it. All right. Moving on, City Property Committee meeting, meeting February 11, 2019. Counselor Zarela, please.
Thank you. The City Property Committee met on four items. I'm going to take them in the listed order, not in the order we actually discussed them that evening. We had 00718, Counselor Paul Boishman, to look at the possibility of putting in a roadway that connects the Crawford Airport Road area to the Summer Street area. That was given leave to withdraw at the request of the petitioner, or recommended to be given leave to withdraw. 24318, Vincent P. Pousatieri II, City Solicitor, to review the provisions of the sideyard sales program and determine whether an amendment should be made to the sideyard sales program so that merger of the sideyard sales lot with the abutting parcel of the purchaser is not required or not required in all cases. After some discussion, that was amended to reflect the fact that there are recommendations that would not require a change in the ordinance, including changes in the actual purchase documents to stipulate that the city receive a right of first refusal or an option for the purchaser to clear the title or to have it cleared by the city at the purchaser's expense. And further, to recommend that the ordinance be amended to allow any member of the Board of Assessors to sit on the City Property Committee rather than the chief assessor, which we no longer have due to some staffing changes. And that was recommended to be granted as amended. 27218, Ann M. Cervantes, City Treasurer, to declare 116 Day Street Parcel 3230 as surplus property and designate to the sideyard sales program. That was recommended to be granted. And 28118, Tom Skorowski, Executive Director of Planning and Community Development, to request the council declare, one, two, three, four, five, six separate parcels as surplus property. That was recommended to be granted.
Motion to approve the City Property Committee report.
I have a motion, second to approve. Speaking on the motion, all those, oh, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I really didn't have an opportunity to speak and say what I wanted at the committee meeting. Most everyone here won't see it, but if the parcels are not attached to those sideyards, they will, some of them in the future will be back in front of the city council for a new sales thing. Because if they don't pay their taxes, and it's not attached, and somebody decides, somebody buys it today, they may pay the taxes. In the future, a new owner may come. If it's not attached, they decide they're not going to pay it, it will be back before the city council in the future. The other part is, after, you know, looking over the sideyard sales, sale price will be negotiated on a case-by-case basis to prevent undue enrichment to the buyer. The cookie-cutter approach to selling real estate is ridiculous. If you want to talk about undue enrichment, and you're talking about the Day Street property, I know the sideyard abutter now. Whatever he pays, if he pays $5,000 or $10,000, it's going to increase the value of his property by 20 or $30,000. But $300 does not take care of the taxpayer in the city of Pittsburgh. So, I'm really not a real enthusiast about the sideyard sales in all cases. So, when we're giving property away, fine. I also found a little conflict. It says the lot price will be used to cover recording and legal costs incurred by the buyer. Page after that, or two pages after, says the buyer will be responsible for all legal recording and other applicable fees. So, I don't know what part you're going to use, but I just don't like the cookie-cutter approach. In the real world, in real estate, there's more thought to the value of each piece of property, and it can be accomplished by the assessor or an independent appraiser. But I think it's, I don't think it's a good program for the city. It makes it easy, no thought required. I'm not in favor of it for those reasons.
Thank you. Counselor Dana Tally.
I just threw you, Madam Chair, to the Chairman of Property. It was stated earlier that there was no opportunity for the counselor to speak at his committee meeting. Is that the case? Did you offer public comment, Counselor? Because I'm curious.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Zarela.
Yes, I did offer public comment at the beginning, as I do at every City Property meeting. Counselor Donnelly did speak. I do understand, however, that he wished to speak further on, you know, as the issues developed. That is, really, I understand, but that is a consequence of what we debated a week or two ago. I had to treat him no differently than any other member of the public.
Thank you. And Counselor Dana Tally.
Okay, so you did allow public comment. Just want to make that clear, so people had an opportunity to speak. The sideyard sales program, the, isn't the purpose of that program primarily to expedite the sale of these properties and get them back on the tax rolls? So, I understand the argument that if you spend $5,000 on an empty lot or a lot that the abutter buys, it increases their overall value by fourfold or fivefold, but wouldn't that be captured in the increased value of their other property when their taxes are assessed? And then, I guess what I'm trying to say is, while the buyer gets more value overall than what he pays or she pays for the parcel, the city gets the $5,000, and then the city gets the added tax revenue from two places, from the lot that's now owned by that private owner and the increased tax value that they're getting assessed because their value went up four or five-fold. So, I don't know mathematically, case by case, if it's a wash or we make out in the end, but maybe in some cases we don't. But I just want to make it clear, unless someone can tell me I'm wrong, that in addition to the upfront payment, they're now paying the tax on that property that was taxed as we weren't collecting previously, and their overall property value increases as a result, which we would then get from the new assessed value. So, I just, so there is, there are gains beyond just the 5,000 to the city coffers. I don't know on a case-by-case basis if we break even or if we make money, but I seem to recall the whole reason for this program was to make it more, get these properties off the rolls more quickly. And I guess the only way to prove out if it's not working because of how low we sell these parcels for is if we were to set a price that was a lot higher than 5,000, 10,000, would an owner buy it? Would a private owner buy it? Because then, the increased value of their property by paying that much more, if their property's going to go up by $20,000, let's say, for paying 5,000 for an extra parcel, is it a disincentive to have them come forward and pay 15,000 for it and only make 20 in increased value, so their net is only 5? So, I understand the argument, but for me, the goal has always been getting it off our hands and getting it back into a property that's producing tax payments, whereas currently they are not. And I would think that for an abutter, and in cases like Day Street, you can't really build a structure there. You can only put either a parking lot or something there. But I thought typically the sideyard sales program deals with parcels, at least in my experience, for the most part, where you can't, it's not a buildable lot. You can't build something there. It may be abutting someone's property where they just want to increase their line by 10, 15, 20 feet, maybe more, but it's not something you can actually build a structure on, short of maybe a shed. I don't know. But I know there's been a lot of instances, because I used to be on property, where most of these properties that we were selling in the program, you couldn't build on. So, it was targeted to those abutters, and I didn't think the sale price was unreasonable considering you can't build on there. And also considering the fact that they're now paying tax on it, and their value has increased, which would increase their tax payment on an annual basis. So, that's just my take on it. I'm not necessarily disagreeing or agreeing with Counselor Donnelly. I just, I do see some merits to it, but I guess there may be some case-by-case instances where it may not be that beneficial, but I haven't seen it thus far in totality that it's not been beneficial. But thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zarela.
First, I'd just like to confirm that, yes, the program is for non-buildable lots. However, not every non-buildable lot is mandated to go into the program, to my understanding. And that ties into the second point I would like to raise, which is, the question before the committee as to Day Street was just whether to approve putting it in the program or not. The question of how much the program charges for lots that are in the program was not one of the things that was before us at the time. It is certainly something I'd be happy to have in front of my committee if someone puts in a petition to discuss that further. But it wasn't actually something we had before us as a committee at the time. As to the merger issue, I'd like to explain that briefly. That came up as a result of some actual cases that have come up this year, in which lots that were purchased by abutters had unclear title, and then when the abutters went to sell their principal lot, because we had forced them to merge them, they were stuck having a problem selling their entire having a problem selling their entire lot because that cloud on the title for the small parcel that they took off our hands essentially infected their entire title and made it not, you know, it made it more difficult to sell, more difficult to mortgage, and so on. So this proposal, this proposed change in the way we conduct this was an attempt to maintain all the benefits of requiring a merger, particularly making sure that people can't just sell off the small lot separately for whatever purpose some other person might want it for, unless we see that as beneficial, while at the same time making sure that no one is forced to choose between either not taking the lot and leaving it on the city books, doing nothing, versus taking the lot and risking being unable to sell their actual home or business, or whatever else they have adjoining. To that end, that's where the city solicitor's office came up with the two alternative means that we addressed as a committee. One being, and please feel free to correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this in any way, one being that we simply insert a provision in the grant stating that the purchaser of the lot gives the city a 20-year right of first refusal. In other words, if they go to sell that smaller lot, separate from their main lot, we get first veto over it. We can take it back before they can sell it on, unless we say otherwise, which still preserves our right to make sure that it's not going to be used by some, I don't know, speculator or remote investor who won't care about the neighborhood or anything like that. The second option is simply for the city to do the work to clear the title, which, if I recall correctly, my computer just shut off, we were told would run roughly $1,500, which would be charged to the buyer, making it a slightly more cumbersome sale, but then guaranteeing that they get completely clear title over it and can merge it into their main lot without difficulty. Neither one of those is a perfect solution. The perfect solution would just be to not have any title difficulties. But with the way we take these lots in the first place through the land of low-value process, that's inevitable. We aren't going to always get it with clear title. So that's the rationale behind that.
Thank you. Counselor Donnelly, I'm going to hear from Counselor Caddy first, and then we'll get back to you. Counselor Caddy.
I just want to add that there is another benefit of moving these parcels. And I want to use the example of Peter's Battery. I don't know how many city cleanups in the spring we've had to clean up that lot. If this lot were to get sold, and it's now belongs to a person or a business, they're responsible to keep that lot clean. And we have a list of, I don't know, seven or eight properties. Each and every one of those would be subject to trash, abandoned cars, et cetera, and by having an owner, it gives the board of health the ability to have those, keep those lots clean, and the city doesn't have to drive by a lot like Peter's Battery all year and look at the trash.
Thank you. Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. With all due respect to the chair of the property committee, yes, I was allowed to speak, and, but I was allowed to speak for approximately two minutes. I could not speak about each individual item because I was only allowed to speak at the beginning. So that's why I'm bringing it up here. It's the first opportunity I've actually had to speak in some depth about what I'm trying to get across. As an example, but $300, Counselor DeNataly kept referring to $5,000. I haven't heard the $5,000. It says 300. And the conflict is, 300 covers all the legal costs, or it's $300 plus the legal costs? I don't know of many property owners in this city or any other city or town in the area that would be willing to sell any piece of land for $300. It's just, to me, it's a ludicrous amount of money. In the 80s, I bought a piece of property from the city for $500. We're talking 30 years later. I mean, it's miniscule. I am all for getting these property sold and on the tax rolls to benefit the neighborhood, to benefit the neighbors, to benefit the city. But there are very few pieces of property that were substantially more than $300. I was not involved in a sale, but on Boilston Street, a house was torn down. The house with the big yacht on the right also got the big yacht on the left, and the house next door is still on a postage stamp. I don't see that, how that really helps the neighborhood. You know, in some certain case where someone really can't afford it, and it has nothing to do with the council as president. It's just an observation of how the program sometimes is administered in a way that doesn't necessarily benefit the neighborhood. It's nice to have a development where similar-sized houses or on similar-sized lots, they don't all have to be the same, but they should be similar. When you have one person that has an acre and the other one has 5,000 square feet, it doesn't make for much continuity in the neighborhood, much consistency. So I just don't like to see the cookie cutter approach. I like to see different values. There's every, if you go to real estate school, you'll find out every single piece of real estate is unique. Look to the left, look to the right, your neighbors, everyone is a little bit different. So I'm just trying to bring that up. I just don't like the cookie cutter approach, that's all. And I want everything to be sold, I want it to be on the tax rolls, but I want someone to pay a fair amount. I'm not saying fair market value, but something, $300 just doesn't cut it in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to add, before I get to you, Counselor Zarela, that what we have to be always conscious about is that there will be some of these properties that are so far in debt with taxes owed that we could automatically just have to do a write-off on those properties and kind of excuse those and start over because they're, they've been abandoned for so long or in tax title for so long that we're underwater with them. So again, always conscious about, you know, each property individually and how it best serves our community moving forward. I agree wholeheartedly with that. Counselor Zarela.
So first, I'd just like to very briefly touch back. I won't get into it too much because I'm aware that Counselor Donnelly has used his, you know, two debating opportunities, and I don't want to put him at a disadvantage. I'd just like to note that if I had chosen as chair to allow any council member to speak during the proceedings or to speak extra times or anything like that, I would have needed to afford that ability to every member of the public, which at that particular meeting may not have turned into an issue because there weren't that many people there. But I don't want to set that precedent and then have people feeling that I am deciding how much time to give people based on who's in the audience and based on the identity of who wishes to speak. That's exactly what I hope to avoid. So I am glad, however, that Counselor Donnelly had the opportunity to raise his concerns at this meeting because they are entirely valid, and I wouldn't want to shut them out. So as to the pricing, first, I'd just like to note that the Day Street lot was a little bit unusual compared to some of the others that I've seen on the Sideyard Sales Commission since the beginning of this past year. The prototypical sideyard sales lot is generally one where the abutting property owner essentially already has been caring for the lot or would like permission to start taking care of the lot because it's an eyesore, but they don't necessarily have the money to invest in improving their property. So we're giving them a nice low price largely because we're saying, look, we don't want this on our hands, you don't want to have to deal with this, especially when it's not yours, so you take it, you take care of it, and that's essentially your payment. The $300 is, in those cases, largely pro forma. Also, I'd like to note that the second point that my colleague made, I think is very important, and I think it's one of the reasons why we often have a low price on these lots, is because then it becomes an issue where the Sideyard Sales Commission, if we have two or more abutters, the commission can decide which of the two or more abutters would benefit the neighborhood most by acquiring this lot, rather than making it about which can afford to put up the highest bid for the lot. If you have one abutter who has a conforming lot with plenty of yard, and they just want to add on some extra yard to maybe put in a pool or whatever, and you've got another one who's on a postage stamp lot that's legally non-conforming, and they're looking to get a yard, to put a swing set in or something like that, then if we've got a low fixed price for some of these very low-value lots, we have the option of looking at those two abutters who both apply and saying, okay, well, this guy, yeah, it would improve his property, he'd love it, great, but this guy could really use it, and giving it to him would decrease the impression of overpopulation in the neighborhood, decrease the impression that we have these crammed lots and whatnot, and so we could give it to that person. That being said, if there is a case where there's two or more abutters and the abutter who seems to need it most simply doesn't apply, the commission can't really do anything about that. If we have one who really needs it and doesn't put in an application, and one who really doesn't need it and does put in an application, that's, you know, that's just kind of how it goes.
Thank you. I have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One in opposition, and Counselor Don, are you in, on all of them or a particular petition?
Not all of them, just the one.
Which one were you in?
Sideyard Sales Program.
24318.
Should have had it pulled out of committee.
1233, that's what we're trying to figure out.
72 and 81.
Moving on, Finance Committee meeting oral report. Counselor DeNataly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finance met this evening and took up several orders from the mayor's office for use of free cash totaling $1.02 million. Appropriations included $300,000 for the DPW for increasing the snow and ice budget, $450,000 to procure several vehicular equipment for DPW, 3219, $36,000 for traffic signal maintenance, and streetlight repairs for hit-and-run incidences where we cannot recover the cost from insurance, $18,000 for asbestos abatement at Coolidge Park, $145,000 for the procurement of three new police, frontline police cruisers, 3519, $35,000 for the purpose of purchasing a parcel of land required for the development of Twin Cities rail trail, and last item was $35,000 for interior French drains, sub-pump gutters, and connection to an existing discharge line and construction, supporting a timber beam in the basement of the senior center. And we also took up an item that was brought back to the committee on poll worker pay, where we amended the order to have the pay be reflective in 2020 at the 2022 rates instead of the normal schedule the clerk provided. This would only result in, this would result in about a $20,000 increase next year, as opposed to it being an increase over the next four years. We moved it up front. That was a vote of two to one, so.
Motion to approve the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. I have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will now hear a public hearing, 02619. Mass Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated to petition the City of Pittsburgh to grant an easement for the right to construct and maintain an overhead system, which is telephone poles, installed on the easterly side of South Street on the property known as Mare Meadow Reservoir, Westminster, Mass, as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open and ask the person or persons representing the matter to be seated at the center table. And this evening, we have Mr. Diego Villarreal.
Close enough.
Okay. Say it for me so I can understand it.
Villarreal.
Villarreal, okay. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, so you now have the floor.
Thank you, Counselors. Well, National Grid is proposing the installation of a pole on alone South Street. The reason for this is to provide structural support to existing pole 75. I'd like to say that this power line supplies power to the city pump station. And there's only one pole installation that we are proposing, and we'd like to get an easement for this. Thank you.
How much time would you need to do that?
The installation of a pole, an anchor in a, an anchor in a pole-to-pole guy will take approximately seven hours, seven to eight hours. We will need police detail.
Does this have any effect on the water department? That we know of, has the water department been, are they present, or did they write a letter?
I have nothing. John Delain did send an email to the council in favor of this. Counselor, I'm sorry, Madam Clark just said that John Delain did send an email and was in favor of this from the water department. Counselor Squalla.
I have the email, I'd just like to read it. I will not be able, from John Delain, the Deputy Commissioner of Water Supply, I will not be able to attend, as I'm away on a previously scheduled vacation, next week's council meeting, which will include a hearing for utility pole and watershed property that the city owns on South Street in Westminster. A representative of National Grid will be in attendance. I have reviewed the proposed location, and I'm completely in favor of granting this easement. The electric lines in this area supply power to the city's pump stations at Mare Meadow and Bickford reservoirs, and therefore are critical to our operation. Any improvements in the strength of this infrastructure will benefit the city, and we are pleased that National Grid is making improvements in this area. If there are any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
That's what I was going to say, but not completely. I just knew that John wrote a letter in support. I don't think there's much question about, it should be done.
Counselor Bozeman.
Did I hear him right? He said you're going to run power lines to the pump station over there?
No, those power lines supply power to the city pump station. Those are existing overhead wires.
Okay.
Yeah, we just gonna install a pole across pole 75 on South Street.
Right. Because when I looked at your print there, I thought it was supposed to be, I thought it was a guide pole to hold up your.
Exactly, that's exactly what it is.
Yeah, a guide, right?
It's an overhead wire that goes from existing pole 75.
Right.
To our proposed pole on the city's property.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition of the petition? If all have been heard, we declare the hearing closed.
Motion to approve, 3719.
I have a motion, second, to approve 2619. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, thank you. Thank you. I did, I closed, I did right, did I say that? Okay. All right. Okay, all right. Moving on to the agenda, ordinances, 03719, an ordinance, six two-hour parking spaces, all being 20 feet by 8 feet, shall be installed by amending section 16926 entitled "Time Limit Parking as Follows," Oliver Street. The resulting inserted line shall be read as follows.
Move the ordinance be sent to its third and final reading or day we roll the matter out.
Motion second to send reference petition 24818 to its final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 03819, ordinance, section 16959 entitled "One Way Streets," at the line which references in the first column Putnam Street, shall be amended as following. The amended line will read as follows. Upon the following streets or parts of streets, vehicular traffic shall move only in one direction indicated below, Oliver Street, south from Pritchard to Main Street.
Move 3819 to its third and final reading.
Motion second to send reference petition 24818 to its final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Petition 03919, an ordinance, section 16959 entitled "One Way Streets," shall be amended as follow, Putnam Street. The resulting amended line shall read as follows. Upon the following streets or parts of streets, vehicular traffic shall move only in the direction indicated below, Putnam Street, south from Main Street to Boulder Drive.
Move 3919 to its third and final reading.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 04019, an ordinance, six two-hour parking spaces, shall be installed between Main Street and Boulder Drive by amending section 16926 entitled "Time Limit Parking as Follows." The following inserted line shall read as follows. Putnam Street, easterly, two hours from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., except Sundays and legal holidays, from Main Street to Boulder Drive with a 10-foot safety zone on each side of the fire hydrant.
Move 04019 be sent to its third and final reading.
Motion second, reference petition 25518 to be its final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Harry, thank you.
Move 4319 to 4619 be sent to their respective.
Second.
Motion second to send petitions 04319 up to and including 04619 to its respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. One in opposition? Counselor Squallia. Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.